Good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pray, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings at hand, Father. We thank you for the Christmas season that's on us, Lord. I pray that we realize the true gift and we thank you for the Savior, Father, which is that gift, Lord. We thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you, to serve this city, and pray that you guide us through each and every step and each and every moment. I pray your blessings on this council and administration. Just give us all your wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment to carry forth your will as you see fit. We give you all the thanks and all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Intergovernmental Committee Work Session Council Meeting held on December the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of December the 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right, we do not have a proclamation, but the mayor has a statement that he'd like to read to you.
A lot's been said about, you know, employment, jobs, the Goodyear situation, so I want to give everybody an update on where the city stands on everything. The City of Gaston understands the value and importance of good-paying jobs in our community. Through the years of rigorous financial management, expensive controls, and a careful debt management strategy by the City of Gaston, we are in a strong financial position. Gaston is fortunate to have a historic low unemployment rate of 2.8 percent. This low unemployment rate means that anyone who wants to work can find a job. In fact, Gaston's well-trained workforce and business-friendly programs and policies mean more than 22,500 currently jobs available within a 50-mile radius. The value of contributions that Goodyear has made to Gaston during the long term as an important industry in our region, in the past, we have worked closely with state leaders to safeguard Goodyear's continuing operation in Gaston by securing significant capital investment. Through the past year, the City of Gaston leaders have worked to collaboratively assemble a broad coalition of leaders committed to the cause. The City of Gaston, Etowah County Legislative Delegation, Etowah County Commission, the State of Alabama officials, and other governments all stand ready to do whatever possible if and when called upon to support Goodyear Gaston. We have made tremendous investments in education, workforce development, infrastructure, all to support industry in our area. Through partnerships with Gaston City Schools, Gaston State Community College, we have developed programs to support the next generation of high-paying industrial jobs that require skills like automation, robotics, and welding. We have also undertaken extensive property acquisition and site improvement programs to further develop our airport industrial park. These investments in infrastructure and property mean that we have hundreds of acres and ready to build sites for continued development of our diversified economy. Gaston and Etowah County have executed a long-term plan to develop a mature and resilient economy. The development of this diversified economy means that we have employers from a wide range of sectors, including advanced manufacturing, automotive, food, healthcare, metalworking, logistics, and other target industries. Our development efforts with the Gaston Industrial Development Authority over the past three years has resulted in a new and existing industries that have announced more than $208 million in capital investment, adding 644 new jobs. While the loss of Goodyear Gaston is significant to our community, we are well-positioned to continue to grow Gaston and further develop our community with an excellent quality of life and with good-paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none. We have a resolution amending the rental rates for various facilities of the Parks and Recreation Department, and this amends the list of rentals of certain facilities in a combination package to include the botanical gardens at Nakalula Falls, the Nakalula Falls Combo Season Pass, the name change for the new pavilions at the Morana Park, and removal of Convention Hall. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
End of the discussion for the general public. This is, and I'm sure you can get these rental rates that are on our website, but I believe the, at the pavilion at Morana Park, you'll have a blue pavilion, I believe, and a red pavilion, but those are the name changes and the rental prices that you can get those offline. So this will affect everybody in the city. So spread the word about the rental changes, the facilities, the package, and how much it costs so that everybody will know. Can I get, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Madam President, may I take a point of privilege here? I've gotten several calls, there's some confusion. I just want to clarify, the cost to enter the park, general admission to the park, is not changing. It's the same. It's not being addressed by this at all. This is just for facility rentals for the larger spaces, but the cost for the, I know there was some changes in the cost for the Christmas on the Falls program, which is kind of a standalone event, but the daily admission rates for the park are not changing in this agreement. Thank you, Madam President.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with the MLFLW LLC, and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Couso Landing, and this will be held on June the 13th, 2020, and the amount is $2,000, the budget amount. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion. This is sort of self-explanatory, which means that the city, the Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting or be a part of a fishing tournament that's held at Couso Landing. For our next item, we have a first reading. This is an ordinance.
We did it both.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our first reading is an ordinance amending City Code Section 82.7B, and this is regarding the cost of the defensive driving programs. This changes the participant fee to an amount not to exceed $125, and this ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next meeting.
Madam President, may I say, this was requested to come up on December 17th, and I would ask for unanimous consent at this time to consider this.
So we're suspending the rules.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
We're suspending the rules.
I did. You had them as consent to consider.
Yes, those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration today.
Now move to adopt.
Councilman Reed, would you tell us what this is?
This is establishing the defensive driving program that we've had for a number of years for extending it.
Clerk, will you take?
Oh, and changing the fee also, I'm sorry, from 100 to 125.
This is a driving school.
Yes.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is an ordinance establishing the Crime of Theft Prevention Program in Municipal Court. This is a program to address crime of theft with an emphasis on shoplifting to be directed by the municipal court clerk. It provides for an advisory committee, which includes the presiding municipal judge, the municipal court clerk, and mayor. A participant fee not to exceed $125, and establishment of a separate account for funds collected. Fees will be used to defray costs of service provided by this and other safety, education, enforcement, and awareness programs. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it at the next meeting, and you'll hear again about it next meeting. This is establishing, this is establishing a program because we have, all over the country and even in our city, shoplifting at a cost of a billion dollars. That's the reason why some businesses don't locate here, and we have statistics on that. Shoplifting has nothing to do with race, creed, or color, has nothing to do with male or female, all of them are invited, but we have a lot of shoplifting that goes on in our cities, even by employees, and this is why you don't have a lot of businesses who will locate, who will relocate here. So we're trying to establish a, it's already, but we're trying to help our situation by establishing the Crime of Theft Prevention Program. So you hear more about it next week.
And Madam President, this was also requested by December 17th, and we would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider that today.
Second.
I've already discussed it. Clerk, will you take?
I was going to relax back to you in this condition.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Madam President, if I may, just one quick point. If you remember, probably three, four weeks ago, we had a commercial investment partner that come in town, and they were looking at an opportunity in the city. And you may recall that I mentioned that one of the things that they were considering and the factors for considering Gaston was the shrinkage rate. And they were clear, you know, to Madam President's point, it's not an issue that's specific to Gaston, but when you hear them reference your cities, it's just like them talking about your family. When you hear them reference your city's issues with shrinkage, it's embarrassing. And so, the good citizens of this city, which is most of us, should be appalled by it and should take every step, every meaningful step necessary to make sure that we're adequately policing. And I do want to thank, again, publicly, our police department. They have been working overtime, not only putting boots on the ground as relates to shrinkage and theft and things of that nature, but they are also benchmarking the best practices of other cities and bringing back to Gaston some of those best practices to make sure that we can combat this issue. So, again, not to belabor the point, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
And Madam President, if I could add to that, a compassionate side to this program too, you know, we've always known about driving school. If you had a good driving record and you got a speeding ticket, you know, it was a way to divert and maybe keep that from going on to your record. Well, the truth of the matter is, while there are a lot of habitual thefts committed by the same person over and over again in any community, there's also times where young people just make bad decisions, and maybe they're frustrated because they don't have a job or they don't have money, and then maybe they're caught stealing some food or something like that, a small amount. What this would do would be to divert them into a program rather than having that on their record so that they can learn about the resources available in this community for employment, resources available to help you through a hard time, all those things that would hopefully divert those individuals off of a path of crime and back onto the right path where they know what resources are available for them. So I think this is a great thing. Thank you, Madam President.
Do we need to vote on it?
We do.
Okay. Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one item, and I'd like to ask for consideration under new business today. It's a resolution awarding bid, number 3424, to Wiregrass Construction Company.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's a resolution authorizing a public hearing on proposed economic development agreement with lost Argos properties. Ask them for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You won't tell them about a business in your own?
Well, this is a new restaurant will be coming to the 400 block of West Megan Boulevard, and they have several, so we're looking forward to them locating here in the City of Gaston.
Do you want to go now? Would you want to go now?
Yes, I have to be somewhere else. I have a visitor with me today, and I would like to introduce my 55th birthday present, Grace Guyton. Would you stand up, Grace, and wave to everybody? She's a student at Alabama, she's a sophomore this year, it's unbelievable, but she takes after her mother and her smarts, not me.
And she's a nice shade of red after being embarrassed like that.
Any more new business?
I have one, Madam President. I'd like to, this is from, comes from the legal department, it's requested by the mayor's office. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Ace American Insurance Company to obtain cancer coverage for firefighters. This is required by State of Alabama Act Number 2019-361, and the budgeted amount is $23,958. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have a resolution authorizing a special use permit for Verizon to co-locate their equipment on the existing wireless telecommunication facility located at 4610 Airport Road. Ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Just to clarify, guys, this is pretty routine stuff. We allow certain service providers to use some of the telecommunication poles that we have throughout the city to hang their satellites on. Sometimes those are in place to assist 911 and EMA functions, things like that. So, long-term leases, they get to bolt a satellite to the towers that you say.
Thank you.
Clerk, have it.
It's me. Yes, ma'am, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider resolution authorizing agreement with ECS Southeast LLP to provide the full-depth reclamation mix design, the construction material testing and inspection service for the 2019 CTBG street servicing program. And I would apologize if I'm to do this, I'm using secondhand glasses and I can't even see it. I got through that part.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any department reports, committees? We have one citizen request, Robert Avery. If you give us your name and address in five minutes.
I might ask for a point of privilege, but I think I can do it in five minutes. My name is Robert Avery, I live at 710 Crestview Drive. I come this morning to talk about our Parks and Rec Department overall, and in particular the Carver Community Center. We talked a little bit upstairs and I'll say some of it down here because I think the public needs to be aware of what's going on. You just passed a resolution amending fees for our public facilities. This past year, I counted, I've been to five birthday parties, people my age or around my age, and it's been at Rainbow City Community Center. I went back and talked to three of them and asked them why did they book their birthday party in Rainbow City when they live in the City of Gaston? All three said that they had issues trying to book the Carver Rec Center, number one, and number two, the Rainbow Center was cheaper. And so, I want this city to realize, and of course, had I been on the council a few minutes ago, I probably would have voted against a rate increase for our facilities. Our citizens pay a hefty amount of taxes, and we do a lot of things within the city limits, and we need to reevaluate, even though you just passed it, we need to reevaluate what we're charging our citizens to use our facilities. I could see charging people who live outside the city, and I'm not so sure if Rainbow City ain't doing that. If you don't live in the city, they might be charging you a little bit more, but still at that same rate, it's a lot less than what we're charging at some of our facilities here in the city. So I would ask that you all look at that and do some comparison and see if we can't get in line to keep our citizens from going to Rainbow City to using their facilities. And I don't have anything against Rainbow City, let me get that clear right now, but I think we can better use our facilities. As we noticed upstairs, the Carver Center revenue has been, has gone down every year, and the reason for that is what I just said. A lot of folks who probably would have booked the Carver Center, first of all, couldn't get it booked because there was nobody there to book it, and second of all, because of the rate. And so, please, ma'am, and please, sir, if you all would, take a serious look at that and see if we can't get that back in line and see if we can't start using our facilities instead of having to go to Rainbow City. The other thing I want to say right quick is about what happened this past weekend. They were trying to use the gymnasium. We had a lot of kids and a lot of people there at the Carver Christmas Parade. We were not able to use the facility because of the fact that there was nobody available to work it, number one, and I have issues with that, but what they used, one of the excuses was, we didn't have anybody to work it, but we also were afraid that it had been on the internet that they were going to have the parade, and we were asking families to bring their children out to give them gifts and candy and stuff like that, but they were afraid that the people from Anderson, I don't know why Anderson gets to be the boogeyman here, people from Anderson or gangs from Anderson was going to come and possibly shoot up the place. Well, if we're going to go along with those rumors and the thoughts, then everybody in this city needs to just go home, lock their doors, don't come out again. We can't live and we can't operate on those type of issues. Our police department or security didn't want to work the center, at least that's what I was told. And I have a real issue if the police department feels that they're afraid that that might happen. And I understand things happen, but we can't live our lives worried about things like that. We've got to continue to live. We can't let thugs and hoodlums dictate what we do with our lives. And I would ask that, again, we think about those things when young people, and we always talk about, we've got plenty of things for young people to do, but when you, when they try to do them, you limit them because you use excuses that we might, we're afraid that something might happen. Well, as soon as I leave this building, I could walk out in the streets and an 18-wheeler could hit me, but when I leave this building, I'm going to walk out in the streets. I can't worry about that. And so I would ask that this council and the mayor and our police department, and particularly our Parks and Rec Department, look at their, whatever they have there, license, I mean, they're, they got to have some type of management book or something that they look at to decide these issues. And if you would do that, I think the city and the citizens would be better off and better served. Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks by the mayor council. Councilman Williams, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. Do want to remind everyone that District 2 has a district meeting this Thursday, so the day after tomorrow, at the East Gaston Community Center at 6:30 PM. Is that what we advertised, Jennifer, 6:30? 6:30 PM? Again, that's Thursday, December 19th, at the East Gaston Community Center at 6:30. The intent, of course, is to discuss, the only topic at that meeting will be the East Gaston Community Center construction project. We're going to provide an update, entertain some questions, and provide some feedback as it relates to that. Right now, we know that I'll be there, of course, and the city engineer will be there. Our hope is that, and it's, you know, it's a difficult time of the year scheduling-wise for a lot of people, but our hope is that the contractor will have a representative there as well so that, so that he or she can provide some updates. So again, 6:30 PM, Thursday, December 19th. Want to ask anybody that's interested in that project to come out. The only other thing that I wanted to talk about is as it relates to the mayor's comments regarding the economic development status and financial status of the city. We are obviously not excited, nobody's excited, about what's taking place in terms of Goodyear's planned downtownizing, but I think, I think what does need to be said and restated and what was said in the mayor's comments is pretty clear. From a financial perspective, we've been hedging, at least for one year, probably two. We've been hedging in terms of our budget. We couldn't say a whole lot, obviously, because conversations were being had offline, but we were hedging. If you remember, many of you that watched very closely our financial elements, if you remember during the economic recession in 2009, 2010, there were some, obviously, we were coming out of a very difficult economic period, and the city had to adjust its expenses downward, and the groups that got hit hardest during that time were the outside agencies, and one of the more prominent ones at that time was the school system. You know, again, we sat here and watched people make a lot of allegations without being at liberty to talk openly about why we were having to adjust, but I think it's pretty clear now that that was one of the things that was in front of us and one of the things we were trying to hedge against. Also, you know, I think people need to understand that the city operates on a 53, 54 Also, you know, I think people need to understand that the city operates on a $53, $54 million budget, so OLF from Goodyear makes up about, as we were told by our finance director today, that OLF makes up about $2.2 million of that, and so, you know, that, you know, if you use the high number, 54, that backs our budget down to about $52 million. And so, you know, $2 million won't bankrupt us, but it will definitely cause us to have to adjust. And of course, there are, there are other residual impacts associated with the prospect that people may leave your market. So, we're, again, we're planning and trying to be as, as good a steward over city resources as we possibly can, and I'm proud of the city in that we did a lot behind the scenes to try to get our, one of our major industrial partners not to go in this direction. But we've also, understanding that we have limited control over that scenario, we've also done some good planning. So, we'll continue to move forward, continue to be good stewards over the city tax dollars, and, you know, and also remain optimistic in the fact that this potentially gives Goodyear the opportunity to engage in a scenario that considers itself right-sized for future capital investment. So, you know, again, you know, that's very optimistic thinking, but it's something that we're not taking off the table, and we're, we staying ready, and I think one of the more prominent things that the mayor said in his comments was that it's not just the city that stands ready, but I think all of our local legislative partners stand ready to step up and support where needed. And I think they've all demonstrated that, and, you know, Goodyear is that important to this community. So, we're prepared to move forward and support them. So, we, our prayers go out to, to those families that are being impacted. You know, I've been on one side or the other of those buyout scenarios, and I know that, you know, the, that influx of cash, while to some degree it can provide cushion, it can also provide some tremendous tax opportunities and some transitional opportunities for people receiving it. So, our prayers go out to those folks, and we want to remind and encourage them to reach out and use the public resources that are available. We had the Career Center folks to actually present today in pre-council, and there are a number of programs that are available, so we want to encourage people to actually reach out and utilize those public benefits that are available. Madam President, beyond that, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. Please be safe during the holidays, and God bless each and everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to Carver Revitalization Committee for the Christmas Parade that they put on this past weekend, and it went very smoothly, but it was dark. It was dark on the square also. Some of the lights was out, the decorative lights was only out, I think it was four, I counted, that was out on the square, and then the 19, of course, is out on Tuscaloosa Avenue. So, we're still trying to work that issue, and I'll continue to fight for it. And like the councilman just said, the Alabama Works Rapid Response Team Assistance for Dislocated Workers has been at Goodyear, talking with the employees, and will also give a response here, I think, next week, to let them know about all the different programs that they could ascertain while they move in or whatever. There's all kind of programs out there for them. So, thank you.
Councilman Bat?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had quite a few calls and inquiries about the trees on Rainbow Drive. Just to kind of set the table, that's the state road, it's the state highway. The city does not control anything on that road. We do have a maintenance agreement with the state that we're very glad to have that allows us to keep maintenance on that road. There is a plan in place to beautify the median. The first thing that has to happen, though, is that the State of Alabama is going to make some changes on the medians where there's maybe a new turn lane is needed or some egress areas are needed, which means they'll have to cut up the median. So, all of that is being worked, and then the city will come back. We'll have to have an approved plan by the state because there are state regulations and rules that allows what you can and cannot plant or put on a state median. So, just all the good folks in District Four that live down there and the people that drive by there, I realize it doesn't look good right now, that's just part of the process, but we are working on it. There is a plan, and we're not going to let it stay the way that it is. And so, things are, better days are coming for the medians on Rainbow Drive, and I guess even on Meagan Boulevard, which is not in my district. Other calls that I get a lot lately are leaves, this, just this time of year. Leaves fall off of trees every, every year about this time, and they all do it at the same time, all over the city. We only have so many employees and so many trucks that can go and pick up these leaves, and it's organized as adequately as possible and as efficiently, cost-efficiently as possible. You know, keep in mind, we're using taxpayer money to pick these leaves up, so we do it as judiciously as possible. We post pickup times and routes and things like that. People get out in front of those pickup times, and the leaves stay on the road for two, three weeks because your neighborhood hasn't been scheduled yet. So, Country Club and Clubview, you're up this week. That's where I get a lot of calls from. The weather's not helping with the rain and the wet, but the crews are coming, and the leaves will be picked up, and the streets are going to look a lot better. And the last thing is, along those same lines, is if you live on a street and you know there's an intake area, in other words, where there's a drain, and if you walk out there and see that there's a bunch of leaves or other kind of debris that's blocking that intake, the city sure would appreciate it if you'd get a rake or something and kind of remove that so the water can flow down that, flow down that intake. That would be, that would just be a great Christmas gift for the city if the citizens would take time to do that. It really would help. We can't get to every intake. I guess there's 3,000 or 4,000 intakes in the city. We can't reach them all at the same time. So, any help you can give in that regard, that sure would be helpful and sure would be nice. I echo, man, oh, good luck with that. Yeah, you never know. Ask and you shall receive. Echo my fellow council members' comments about the local economy and things. I won't belabor that point, but thank you for what you have said and shared, and would also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and do be safe out there, and just, I guess we will meet again in, what, week after next? Is that right? So, we'll see you after Christmas. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Again, to the, to the Goodyear point, I'm over talking about what's happened and how it happened and who wanted it to happen and who didn't. I mean, it's all just a bunch of conjecture, but I do think it's important to get information out. Alabama Career Center, there's tons of resources there. I know they've already met with every single individual that was facing the buyout proposal over there, so make sure you follow up on all those resources. It's not just one magic bullet. There's about eight or 10 different programs that if you piece it all together, it really can be a smooth transition. The other thing I'll say is I know the Chamber of Commerce is working diligently on a few different programs that will be beneficial over the next few months. I mean, you've got a program that they're doing about Franchise 101, if you've ever considered entering into a franchise business agreement and being a small business owner, there's some great resources there. There's a small business boot camp school that they're putting out over there for those who may be looking to transition into some sort of sole proprietorship where you're the only one, a service-based job or something like that. So, again, as tragic as this is, anytime there's job loss in this community, it is a tremendous opportunity to be an economic catalyst for this community, too. That money can be, from those buyouts, can be used to secure larger funding to support a new business venture, and it could end up being something really positive for this community, and I hope we all take advantage of it. And my heart just goes out, especially with this time of year, to all those employees who are facing that. Again, as a, someone who is this close to being a third-generation tire builder, I can tell you, I remember the day my dad had to pack up and move to Danville, Virginia when I was a kid, about a week before Christmas, and he was there two years. So, I've been a part of that my whole life, and I don't wish it on anybody, but I promise you, we'll get through it together with this community. There's too many people in this community that do care. There's too many resources out there that people can't access for us not to come out of this on the, on the good side. So, again, my thoughts are with all of you guys through this holiday season. Please be safe. I will be doing my community meeting on December 30. I don't expect to see anybody there, but I am going to hold the meeting, and it's at the library at 5:30, so if you want to come out and we can talk about some other issues in the community, I'm more than happy to. And the last thing I'll say about the leaf collection, I was really disappointed, as I usually am when I'm on social media of any kind. This, the Public Works Department took a lot of time and effort to make a really informative video that they published through, and circulated through social media about things that would help that process, that debris pickup and leaf pickup and trash pickup process go smoother. And it was just chock-full of a bunch of sarcastic comments from citizens that obviously didn't even bother to watch the 90-second video before they commented, and that was really disappointing. But I encourage you guys to go find that video and watch it, especially leading up to the holiday season. Probably the number one thing that most citizens do that they don't realize is wreaking havoc on the process, is after all those Christmas presents are opened, don't go dump all your boxes and your wrapping paper out there on top of your leaf pile. Those are two different destinations. Your garbage materials go to one part of the city, those natural materials go to another part of the city. So, if you pile them all up in one big pile, you can guarantee they're going to sit there twice as long as they would have if you would have separated them into two different piles. So, please, if you get a chance, go find that video and watch it. Thanks.
Councilman Cannon?
I wasn't really going to say anything about the video. I watched it the other night late. One part there, it tells you not to call Public Works Department, and then a minute or a few seconds later, it says, "Do call Public Works Department," and there's a number comes up on the screen, and that number that's on the screen is not the number that the person's giving out. So, I think we need to check into that and get that kind of straightened out because the number's not the same on that for the supposed call. I know it probably goes into the same thing, but most people's going to look at that and say, "This is another department or something we're calling," but we need to look into that anyway.
Councilman Cannon, I think they made that video just for you.
Next thing we got here, since you think they made that video for me, I hate to give credit here, but I'm going to, to Robert Avery. I'm guessing, correct me, Robert, eight or 10 years ago, he had solutions to these leaves and wouldn't have no problem.
Whoa.
All the people just bagged them up, furnished the bags, you'd come by and get the bags, won't be no leaves in the gutters and the drains and all that was. He proposed that himself about that many years ago, and I think we're, one day we'll finally come to that, I'm thinking. But on that note, I do wish everybody a Merry Christmas from my house to yours, and also just remember what the real true meaning of Christmas is all about.
Councilman Reed?
Thank you so much for mixing this thing up, those bagging leaves thing with Robert Avery. Good Lord, I went through that thing, and I wouldn't. Now, Robert, I'm going to be remiss in saying this, Parks and Rec is a 24/7 job, and they do an extremely good job. I was looking at the day you were talking about. They covered 19 different places in the city of Gaston that day. I don't differ with you on needing somebody over there to work, that's the problem, but I will differ with you on another one, the police department being afraid to confront gangs. I'm going to tell you something. That goes pretty deep because the only thing that I can see that our police department fears is ambush. And when they go out on the call, that's getting to be the problem. Now, we lost six officers in one week due to that shootings, and we lost one officer, I believe, in a traffic accident. Since then, there were probably more. But when you look at, and I just keep on about the police department, but I swear, if they're first line of defense, if you need them in the middle of the night, they're there, and I got enough sense to know this, that if you need help, you're not going to call the internet and the newspaper and me, you're going to call the police department. And I think that's where it ends, and I really believe that. Thank you.
I forgot to say Merry Christmas to everybody.
Yeah, so did I. Merry Christmas over all that, yeah. And I really mean that.
Due to the upcoming Christmas holidays, the city council will not meet on Tuesday, December 24. The regular schedule will resume on Tuesday, December 31. To Public Works and to the Juror Public, I know in an area, they picked up trash, and I'm not talking about garbage, they picked up trash that day, and that night, somebody came right behind them and put another set of trash right out there. And so, that's the reason why we want to say that public work is not doing their job, but you got people watching public works, pick up the trash, and then they go and dump trash in the same area. Over there on Davis Street, it's a ditch over there. They clean it up. Soon as they clean it up, somebody comes and out the window they throw trash. So, I just ask the citizens, if you care about your community, if you care about your city, then, you know, put the trash in the trash can, don't throw it on the streets. And as far as the statement about what's happening, all I want to say in a nutshell, what they was trying to say in a nutshell, the city of Gaston is in good shape. We're not going to be a ghost town, as some people would like to predict, but we're not going to be a ghost town. We're in good shape, and we're just blessed. And what we should do is wake up every morning and thank God that we're blessed and thank God that we're here. If nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.